Okay. Good afternoon, councillors. Today is the thirteenth day of May, 2025, and we will call this meeting to orders five o'clock. We will start with a line acknowledgement. The town of Carston acknowledges that we are located on traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We have two councillors that are not around the table, but possibly will join us via phone or via Zoom. We're not sure. We have an agenda on the front of you. If you are comfortable with this agenda, would you please put a motion forward?
Motion to accept the agenda for the Carston Town Council meeting, 13th of May, 2025.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you. We have no delegation right now. Now, the adoption of minute, it's been a little funny. We have signed the minute, but actually, the minutes of April the 8th were not passed, apparently. So I don't know how that quite happened, but...
Easily fixed. I move to accept the April 8th, 2025 council meeting minutes.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you very much. Now, we have April 29th. Councillor Jensen?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from April 29th, 2025.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you very much. That's great. Next, under five, bylaw and policy. It's really everything. I think you're going to be pleased with what administration has done, taken in consideration or comments. And I hope that the taxpayer will be even happier.
Mayor, not to interrupt, but I'm guessing, in fact, I know that both councillors who aren't here would like to be here. And if it's just a case of them having to get on, should we move this to later in the agenda, just to give them a chance? Both of them expressed the desire to be here for the budget.
We could.
Correspondence now, if you want.
We could.
I just thought to give them a chance.
All right, sure. I think it's a good point, councillor. Thank you.
Six correspondence, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to do six. The Electoral Code of Conduct Compliance, we never seems to have any issues. We are not ever non-compliant, so we need to pass a motion to approve this Code of Conduct. Councillor Granta?
I would move the resolution to approve the first quarter 2024 Code of Conduct.
That should be 2025, councillor.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
That's my mistake.
2025 Code of Conduct report.
Thank you.
As presented.
All in favour?
The report says 2025, but my RFD does not.
All right. Now, under six B, the follow-up from the previous delegation, I must say, I was very pleased to have that group come and give us a very good debrief on their operation and how they're trying to make themselves sustainable. But when we were discussing the agenda with Geoff, I had read under correspondence, nine A, from Dan MacKee, from Alberta municipality, which is offering a $5,000 grant for something that could be done on September the 1st, Alberta Day. Correct, Geoff?
Alberta Day, yeah.
And they are offering that. And I was thinking, you know, maybe they might be interested in using that and doing something, a rodeo or whatever. So I was thinking, if you are okay with that, we could ask administration to kind of let them know about that grant and see if they're willing to use it. There is money, so if we can use it, why not?
Does administration need to help them fill out that grant? Like, does it have to come from the municipal?
I think we have to apply.
I think we have to be the body that does it, yeah.
So do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, we should. What we need, we need a motion to direct administration to contact the agricultural society regarding that grant.
Are we ready to make a motion?
Sure, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to direct administration to contact the Ag Society concerning the letter from...
Dan MacKee.
Yeah, and concerning Alberta Day festivities.
A $5,000 grant. Okay? Are we okay with that? All in favour? Yeah, I thought...
Mayor, I don't know if you have the foundation, since we're talking municipal here. The news that came out today. We have a new Speaker of the House and we have a new municipal affairs person.
Really? Do you know who they are?
MacIver resigned his seat. Here is his minister.
Well, he was already suggesting at the last conference...
He was appointed Speaker of the House.
Oh, really?
And Joe Scow is assuming temporarily the role of Minister.
He was elected the Speaker of the House because it comes from all parties.
Yeah, not appointed, elected, right?
So Minister Scow is over municipal affairs?
Temporarily.
Temporarily, yeah.
Okay, well...
Just thought that was news we should be aware of.
Yeah, well, that $5,000 grant came under his ministries, so that's interesting. All right, so maybe let's carry on with the correspondence right now, since we started with that. Nine B, Dallas Miller, Alberta Electoral Boundary Commission.
I spoke to Minister Scow about that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if you don't mind, because I wanted to know how Minister Scow was feeling regarding rearranging those boundaries.
So the mayor asked me to follow up with MLA Scow. We had a very brief conversation. Overall, he's not terribly concerned about this whole activity. He said the only thing, if we were going to say anything, was that some ministries in the province get concerned about the sheer geographical area of the ministry. So the insistence on having a certain number per riding is making some writings incredibly large. So for Minister Scow, it's only, you know, maybe a little over two hours from top to bottom. But you get into some other writings, particularly up north, you're half a day's drive from one end to the other. So he said, if you wished, and he didn't really represent it to be critical, but if you wished to respond, it would be to be mindful of geographical proximity so that the MLAs can get around their writing.
All right, councillor.
There was a post on the Facebook, I think it was from the government, asking citizens' responses to it. I responded to it, considering our writing, because it looks like an hourglass. I did mention the distance from east to southwest. But that was just a chance for citizens to say whatever they were saying.
Right. I was curious to know what he felt himself, since he's representing us in this area. And so now we know what he feels. So I don't know. Are you willing for us to kind of follow up on the idea of being mindful of the travelling of those MLA to represent their constituent? Or do you let it go?
So if it doesn't, it sounds like it doesn't affect us directly. So my preference would be do nothing and then we could support somebody else if they took a position.
Yeah, that's the reason why I wanted to know what happened now. All right, under nine C, Tyler Gander, there is a bill 50, as you know. So there is a little bit of, and what would you call it? Analysis of that bill that was done by Alberta municipalities. I reported before on the points that we should pay attention to. And beside that, one being that Code of Conduct is now eliminated. The minute that Bill 50 is passed is no longer something that we can have in our books. And the way Minister MacIver spoke about that, he said, he had a question. It was a Q and a Q and a session. And he was asked by some other mayors if, by any chance, there would be something in place before the election to replace that Code of Conduct. First of all, the reason why they're eliminating it is they were hoping it would help the system. But in fact, what it did, it created a backlog of legal cases that are still not all resolved. And I say, they were trying to help communities avoid exactly so type litigation. And in fact, it increased them exponentially. And so for them, it's important that they remove it. What he said, that we're going to try to put provisions or guidelines for municipalities. And they hope to have them drafted before the election, but they're not sure. So we shall see. For AMI already, the AIP. So that's a program that we participated in. And it's a very interesting reporting. If you remember, it was to allow businesses to be able to bring immigrants to fill positions that were not taken by local workers. And so they reported that we had 12 businesses that participated in that. Tabor was definitely the greatest intake in the county of Tabor. So it was a successful program for what it was used for. But right now, the immigration rules have changed, so that program has to be disbanded. Under, let's go back to seven. Committee and other reporters, a CPO report. Do you have any questions regarding that report?
I didn't upload it. I just saw mine. It's not in here.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it'll be in your next one for certain.
All right.
I have it. It's done.
We have a question.
Yeah, so you might...
Okay, so that's a question. Why wasn't it included?
And that's a very good question, Mayor. I will have it in the next one. Put it on there and then you didn't upload it.
Okay.
Load this, yeah, okay, got it.
Sorry, I was going to say, word is getting around out there, despite what you'd said, that it was somewhat confidential as to what our officer was doing. Do we know anything more as to timelines?
No, not yet. He's extended his time here for a while. And so we're just keeping in touch on that.
Virtually every person that I talk to, it's half a dozen people, express regret that we would be losing him.
Sure, rightfully so.
Yeah. And I think we, as council, express our greatest regrets. But we wish him very well. Him and his family. Fully understand. All right, so councillors, we are at a point where we need to make a decision.
I've got something under eight.
All right, go ahead, councillor.
So it's more of a point of information with respect to the Solid Waste Commission? Is it okay if I talk about that?
Normally, it's a question that you would want to offer.
Trying to think of how I could... The question would be...
Well, it could be under seven. Committee report, if you're reporting something from your committee.
Not on the agenda. But the question would be, is, my question would be, how does, I would like a response from what I'm going to tell council about something related to the solid waste commission.
Can you not wait the next meeting and put it down the agenda so that we have a fair and open discussion and have proper background? Do you have a meeting before that?
Yeah, I have a meeting tomorrow.
That's unfortunate.
It's not earth shattering. It's really a point of information.
Councillor, are you okay to allow councillor Granta to talk about the waste authority?
Fine with me.
How are you feeling, councillor?
If it's point of information, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll use the opportunity. Thank you. So, and I've actually spoken to councillor Burton about this because he was the council rep on the Solid Waste Commission prior to me. So when councillor Burton was there, the commission, we're looking at their operations and their costs and desire to, and one of the, I don't know if everybody knows, but one of the things that is a concern every year for the commission is that we're limited to the amount of tonnage that we can put in the landfill. And if you go over, it's a little...
It costs you dearly.
It costs money and it's a little dicey. And so this is always foremost in the commission's mind. And so when councillor Burton was council rep, they agreed, all the municipalities represented on that commission, agreed to hire a consulting engineer to do a very broad study to look at improving the efficiencies of the commission. And they hired Stan Tech through a competitive proposal process. And the consultants have been working away for about a year or so. And I think their contract is in the range of $100,000. So it's a fairly extensive engineering exercise. And, you know, I came into this, the consultant was about halfway through his work. And I've seen these kind of studies and reports before in my former life, so I knew exactly what the commission wanted to do and where they were going. So the final draft of this report could be presented to us either tomorrow or very, very soon. But we've had an inkling in discussions and updates from the CAO of the commission. And there's a lot of good things there, you know, in terms of if you want to make it more efficient, there's a whole bunch of ways that we could do it. And one of the, for example, one of the ways is we've got too many spread out transfer stations. So we consolidate the transfer stations and get rid of, I think, half a dozen of them and consolidate them. That would save money. Recycling, they're looking at, serious look at, how could we do recycling in this southern Alberta area by community?
And on that point, if I'm not correct, that's not to save money, that's to save volume in...
Yeah. Anything, well, in fact, it would save money because it would reduce the volume going in.
Keeps us from going over.
Yeah, the waste stream.
You have to reduce the amount of tonnage.
Right. Okay, that's the good news, right? The consultant is identifying those kinds of things that would be good to do if money was no object. Some of these things have got big price tags on it. And we haven't seen those numbers yet. But we're being warned as commission members that we could be looking at big dollars. And my comment when I heard that was, well, this would have to go back to our councils. So I wanted to let everybody know that this is happening, that we're going to have this engineering report that was started a year and a half ago or so, discussions thereof. And we're going to get some real numbers. And many of these things may be recommended and good things to do. But it's the old story, is it affordable, right? So I wanted to let council...
Hopefully, to ask some grant somewhere.
I wanted to let council know that this is happening and has been underway. And I think councillor Burton, you had mentioned at the time that this was, had started.
Yeah, and that's the reason that we switched, because I couldn't spend time reading the report. That was part of the reason.
Right, okay. So that's good to know.
I don't know. So the question would be, what do you think?
How can we think anything without reading the report? Bring us a report back and give us a chance to analyze.
Okay. And then would you also like, would you rely, and this is really the question, would you rely on me to transfer that information to you? Or would you like a visit from the... She's come to us before.
Has she, is she planning on doing it? That's a question for you.
Not that I've heard of, but I could ask her.
Why don't you ask her?
Okay.
Okay?
All right, that was what I had to say.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, councillors, I have councillor Kenley online now. And I think we might need to get started. Yeah. Good to see you, councillor.
So councillor Kenley, we did upload, just before the meeting, a copy of the budget that I'll be using. So it should all be there for you. Everyone else has your paper copies. So tonight, a couple of goals. One is, I want to walk through any changes to the budget since we last talked. This year was a little bit different because all of our transfers to reserves are now in the budget. We didn't do a separate reserve listing like we have in the past, so we'll go over those tonight. You'll see them all in the budget. I'm hoping you're good with the budget because it gets really complicated because now that goes into the mill rate that we have to propose for tonight. And I'll talk about that following the budget. Administratively, I'm pleased with where we're at with the budget and with mill rate. But we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go along. So starting with the main budget, anything in kind of that peach-orange colour, those are the changes for today. So I'm not going to go over the historical ones. We've talked about them at some point. So I'm looking at the May 13th changes. And of course, the big ones are just where we start with taxes. So what we built the mill rate on, so the first line in this whole thing is what I want to talk about. This, the revenue, tax revenue in the budget is 2% increase over last year's tax revenue with one small adjustment of $25,000, which is the additional tax revenue from the derelict property bylaw, but that's simply reserved later on. We could have kept it at zero because it's an in and out. But we wanted to show acknowledgement of some revenue in and then revenue to beautification reserves or enforcement reserves. So that was very deliberate. And then you can see the bigger numbers for the school tax as well. So those are all in there precisely. And that's your first three lines.
And the 2% is exclusive of that school increase, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what we talked about last time.
Yes, yeah. So you get into a lot more percentage on the school number. Yes, that's just tax revenue.
That's municipal tax.
I will show you, when we talk about mill rate, much of that 2%, some of that 2% increase is made up of new assessments. So it's not on the backs of the existing assessment. When we get to the mill rate, our proposed, particularly on residential, is just a fraction of a percent increase from last year in average tax impact. So it's almost, it's almost awash for as same as last year.
Which is amazing.
We'll get to that.
That's what growing communities get to experience, eh?
Yeah, right, right. One of the things, I don't have anything else on page one of significance, nothing on page two. On page three, I was just going to show you, these are the main... So this is still on the revenue side. So page three, in the line 195591, from reserves operating. So this is where that accumulated surplus that was in your financial statement last meeting, this is where we're taking it from that accumulated surplus, which is another way of saying non-restricted reserves, bringing it as revenue into the budget. And then we're going to assign it on the expense side. So that's what you're seeing. There's four lines there, accumulated surplus from 2024, accumulated surplus for reserves, accumulated for school over levy, accumulated for agro dome reserves. We'll talk about that agro dome one a little later because only councillor Burton is up to speed on that one right now. But I'll talk about it when we get on the expense side. So that's where that money came into the budget that was surplus from 2024. So that's all the changes to revenue and income. I have nothing on page four, but on page five, I have just a couple of things, nothing major, but just for your information. Page five, we added a GL. It's two, well, it's an old GL. We're using it again, 212505. You'll recall council approved a tax abatement on the Clean Communities project. And, sorry, I just got to grab a tissue quick, council, sorry. And at first, when we were managing this in the budget, we just simply reduced that revenue from the tax line. And we were having some discussion today saying, let's put the revenue in the tax line, but then put the expense on the expense side because it is transparent to show where that's going. So we're not just not collecting some money. We're showing that we are abating tax. We are incurring a loss based on that abatement. And I think as we get into these abatements, we'll remember, this is our first one we've ever done. As we get into more of these, I think I want to list them so that the public can see every year, okay, council abated X amount of dollars this year. It's not just hidden in the big $3 million number in revenue. So we've added that GL.
I like that because really, that matches our thought behind why we did it, right? It's really an investment in our community to have business here and employ people and all of those reasons.
So this shows the cost of that investment and what that is, the cost to the community. And then one line I'm just showing you, it's 212999. We've, we tweaked all of the amortization lines. There's no impact to the budget on those. Those are non-cash expenses. But you'll just see, anytime there's an amortization line, you'll see as per 2024 actuals. So again, they have no impact on the budget. Over the page, on page six, I had, and you'll see a lot of this one, too. If you go down to 221765, I use this one because it's the first one. This is where that money from surplus is now being expended. Okay, so you're going to see there's 15 of these or something in this budget, 20 of these. And so I probably won't go over every one, but that's just the first one. So lots that are going to say move from reserves and lots are going to say as per 2024 actual. And that's just the amortization.
So this one says move to reserve.
Yes, so we are expending, you're, sorry if I said that wrong, Mayor, you're correct. So we brought all that revenue in from last year and now we're transferring it to reserve. We're expending it to the reserve, yes. Thank you for correcting me on the front.
It was true, unrestricted to restricted.
Correct, it's now restricted. That's exactly right. Great way to look at it. That's all you're going to see on page seven, by the way, and it's small amounts. Page eight is again moving those surplus to their respective reserves, amortization. We had a little bit of money for the transfer station and those types of things. We talked about that last meeting. Actually, we had a line item in there. We just tweaked the number a little. Brandon was able to get a small shack that we can put at the entrance out there. We were able to get one at the auction that's insulated and we can hook to power. And so some of that's in that number. It was going cheap.
Just a question on that. Did the transfer station talk about our dump?
Councillor Granta.
When you go into Raymond, you have to pass the gate before you go into the...
Yeah.
Maybe we should consider something like that.
Yeah, so this shack we got will go at there. And there will be someone stationed at the front now saying, oh, what do you got? Okay, you go here, here and here. And so we'll reposition. We were going to move the shack that was up there, but it's connected to a septic tank. It's connected to power. And for what we were able to get this one for, we just said, we're not going to disconnect all that.
The guys are coming in and abusing it.
I have an insulated doghouse I donate. We could put right beside it for a German shepherd.
There you go.
That might help.
Guard dog, yeah, okay.
Wrench a basket on it.
Yeah.
That too does, sir.
Nothing on page nine, again, just those transfers to reserves. I have a few pages here, councillors, not to skip over anything, but not to... Page 13, I wanted to talk just about one thing. This was from your conversation last meeting. So page 13 gets into celebration material 272602. We had the conversation, this really is a follow-up from the Ag Society delegation where there's the extra funding to top up their activities. And so that's in there. A small change engulfed for bank fees, just to reflect that, nothing major there. There's a few on the next two pages I want to talk about, page 14. This is kind of ending off.
Do you want one too?
No, I might.
Everybody getting a cough, aren't they?
Yeah.
So we have some transfers again to reserves, which is what we, you discussed last week. And then we added a reserve under Recreation Reserves and it's agrodome reserves. So Councillor Burton and I met with the Ag Society this weekend. If you remember, we redid our agreement with the Ag Society where the town is assuming responsibility for the structure and the roof. And up until this new agreement, we didn't have that responsibility. So much like our other recreation facilities, we've picked a number, which I will admit is quite arbitrary here. It's just a number we picked that we could accommodate to start putting money away in a reserve for the facility as the main structure and the roof are, are our responsibility.
Yeah, it should be.
And so that's what that number's in there for. So I just wanted to point that one out. And then, this page and the next page, under the bottom of page 14, 294762, this is the bulk of all those transfers to reserves. So that 1.3 million or whatever it was we brought in, this is where it's all, all the rest of it's going into reserves. The bulk of it going into a major utility capital, which I, again, if our bids come in on the sewer plant, that should put us to the point where we can probably do this without financing, with that extra million. So again, knock on wood, we don't have the bids back yet, but we will see.
Are they out?
Uh, no, I think they're getting close though. I think they're getting close.
Can you tell us something about page 15? Your 107844.
I sure can, I was just about to start there.
Mayor, before we go on to ask a question.
Sure.
So Jeff, last year I had suggested maybe changing the name of the reserve account, Land Sales Reserves.
Oh, that's right.
To Land Sales/Purchase or something, just for the next council when they come in. It's just clearer that it's to go either way kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Boy, you're a coughing bunch.
Yeah, I, I think you started it all.
I think I need to put a mask on.
I don't even have a cough.
That's my last one.
I just, just started.
What's in the air? Yeah, what's in the air here?
I have a cough drop.
Hawks on all your houses.
Yes.
Oh, gosh, sick.
So that is the operating portion of the tax budget. So it's not utilities, it's not electrical, we'll get to that in a minute, but it's everything else on the operating. Now, the next part is capital. There's a couple of small changes, and I just want to explain one of them because there's a number of lines in all the budgets. This, this site prep for the Francophone School. I, I met with them last week, everything's looking great. They've got approval for their modulars and a gymnasium. And so I've got to get the land thing dealt with, I'll, I'll bring you up to speed on that next meeting. We've moved that into 2026 only because we literally have no idea what the number should be. We don't know yet, it's just such an unknown. And all of that funding is really coming from MR. Everything we can is coming out of MR and shared with the county. So you can expect from me a resolution sometime this year to transfer the funds to accommodate that site prep. We just, all the numbers were placeholders and we really didn't know exactly what they should be yet. So we'll tidy that one up as the year moves on, and we know exactly where we are and what we're dealing with.
Councillor Jensen, Councillor Burton, Councillor Granger.
When do we expect them to have like shovels in the ground, like, like not for another year?
They weren't sure, I mean, both, the superintendent I met with, both, we both agreed it was highly optimistic for this fall. Like, we thought that was maybe aggressively optimistic. They don't have any of their onsite engineering done, they don't have any of that stuff done. So that's why we said, let's put this into 2026, but if, if we need to start doing some site preparation in 2025, I'll come back to you to move money by resolution.
Sounds good.
Councillor Burton was next.
Yeah.
So my question is, if I remember the size of our MR account, it's not going to go very far.
No.
No.
So you said it's all coming from MR, where does the rest of it come from?
Maybe, and I'm trying not to be cryptic here. So in the event we can just purchase the service land, then we're coming from that land purchase account, which has sufficient, and I don't need hardly anything from MR. But if we can't, and we've got to extend utilities, I've got to put a different funding line together.
There may be a bit of a juggling act there.
Yeah.
And then we have also the possibility of having the county helping us with, with about half of whatever, if I remember right.
They have a very healthy MR account.
They do, which is much more robust than ours.
So if they're able to help us, we'll take that.
That's true.
Councillor Granger?
So I, I got the servicing that we're responsible through, what, provincial and/or federal legislation?
Provincial, yeah.
Provincial.
Yeah.
But you threw me when you said site prep. I mean, does that mean site grading, pre-grading the site? They want a football field over, a soccer field over there, and you got to cut a meter and a half of ground out of there. We're also responsible for those kinds of things?
Not necessarily, but in my conversation with the superintendent, when we looked at sites, there might need to be some elevation, and I said that might be where the county, for example, could either contract with them or participate to some level, so.
What I'm getting at is, where's the description, must be in provincial regulations somewhere. Where's the description of where our job ends in terms of this upfront work? And, and the school takes over. I, it's a little fuzzy in my mind. I think they would spend $2 million setting their site prepared.
What I'll do, councillors, I'll put it in my, I'll put the section in my CAO report next meeting.
Yeah, because-
Yeah.
Like, like when you, you say generally-
Yeah.
Site prep, I mean, that could be lots of work and really expensive depending on the topography or what it is we have to do. And like, I understand water sewer connections, you know, servicing, I get that, but all of a sudden now we're also, this municipality is also responsible for their site preparation. Maybe we always were, but that's not defined in my mind.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting we are responsible for full site preparation, extending service lines, roads inside the parcel. I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, it'd be nice for us to know where our job ends and theirs picks-
It is delineated. I just can't recall off the top of my head, but I'll bring it to you.
Yeah, I'll wait, thank you.
So you'll see some of those. So Mayor, on your 107844, one of the things I asked Jill just before the meeting is, it says remove Sixth Avenue paving. It was removed from LGFF funding and put to Canada Building Fund funding. It was a remove, it was a change because this is infrastructure under the LGFF capital, that line. So we've changed funding source on it.
Okay.
That's all that means, everything else is as per normal.
So it's still a project that will happen?
Yep, it is, yeah.
Thanks.
The rest under the, under the capital is really just some carryforwards, changes a little bit for, if we went to LGFF or if we were in building tax, or gas tax, sorry. There's nothing too major there to talk about. And that's about it in the tax budget.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, of course.
I just had those walking trail bridge along ninth, where are we at with that? It was $90,000. I know we were looking for grants.
Walking trail is $180,000 in the use.
I don't know that, councillor, I'll have to look, I really don't. I haven't even thought about that, actually, yeah.
Right.
So the next one is the orange one, so where your columns are all in bright orange. So this is everything related to utilities. There isn't a lot in this one. We don't have much, the, there's a couple of good news pieces in here. If you go to, which is page two of this one, it's the account number 241799. Because we could eliminate the interest costs on the sewer plant debenture, we were able to apply more to water and wastewater. So we've, we've taken that money and split it between two or three different accounts to reduce some budget shortfalls and to cover some other things. So there was $125,000 budgeted for interest payments on sewer plant debenture-
This year.
In 2025. But given our current position on financing that, we've removed that for 2025.
Councillor Burton?
So Jeff, speaking generally in this budget, our income from utilities covers the operating cost of the utilities?
If you count, so let me, I want to try and get this as correct. No is the short answer, but.
How big of a no?
If you count capital, depreciation, and operations, it's about a half a million dollar a year shortfall.
And if you take those things out, because in my head, those went in there.
So if you take those out, then yes.
Okay, that's the answer I wanted, thank you.
Yeah, that's the story of the amortization always.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good, good way to put it. We knew about that shortfall in, in like a cash flow.
Yeah, no, then fine, yes, yes. I wanted to point out one interesting line on page four. And because we've finished the year and still working on budget, on page four, this is under the revenue side, 194580, there's a contributed assets line. You're going to see this come up again. So what happens is if a private developer does an infrastructure development, after a certain amount of time, we take that on. And they transfer to that, that to us as a contributed asset. And so in this case, we have the Fairway Boulevard project, which is above the golf course. So the water and the sewer are now, and we anticipate by the end of 2025 will be contributed assets to the town and we will own them. So you'll see, that's why you see those big lines that we, we, we expense those right back out. We don't consider that cash, it's not a cash thing. But we do show that in-
Exactly, the same as we did with the agrodome improvements.
Yeah, same kind of story.
So, other than that, one other one I'll point out here, but I would ask for discretion in follow-up questions. We'll deal with this in a closed session potentially. Page five, under Water Capital, 241762, there's an extra $25,000 there for the Main Street Utility Street Works. Councillor Granger does know the context behind this line. And I met with Associated this morning at 11:00, by the way, Councillor Granger, but I'll have something back for you probably at the next meeting. And I'll explain that a little bit more. We, we could talk about it in closed session, but it's a point of negotiation still.
Yeah, understand.
Okay. And that's pretty much it on the utility budget.
Good.
And then I think I have one line for you on the, aside from, aside from amortization on the electrical, the blue one, we had just to carry forward, we didn't expend all the money for KPMG for their study last year, and we just carried that forward and we had their final billing. So that's all done now, we had $14,000 and change left over. So that's coming into the budget from reserves, and then it's being expensed back out in operating. And then there's some small, there's a little bit of contributed assets in this one as well from the cottonwood development on the electrical, and so that's captured in here as well. So councillor, that is the budget.
It's amazing. Thank you.
The process now would be, if you are okay with it, and I really, really hope you are, because if you're not, it really messes up the next item on the agenda. But if you're okay with it, a motion to accept the May 13th version of the budget would be appropriate.
Right. So do you have the motion written properly because it needs to involve-
No, this one's just adopt the May 13th version of the 2025 budget, that's all.
Do you want to do that, councillor?
I would be more than happy to do that, but I just have a quick question. So this budget is balanced-
Correct.
With a 2%.
It's less than 2% councillor?
No, there's a 2% revenue increase, tax revenue increase, correct.
But it's only 2%.
Only 2%.
I would move that council accepts the 2025 tax mill rate budget as presented to us at this council meeting.
Okay. Any questions? I call a question, are in favor?
And thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Councillor Kenley.
So let's talk tax rates for just a minute.
Thank you. I, first of all, want to, to compliment your financial department for bringing us that budget at it, at this time, you worked on it for many months. It's rather impressive, thank you so much.
We're pleased with it, for sure. So also on your desk, I put, this is not the bylaw draft, it's similar, but this is bylaw, 1721 Mill Rate Bylaw. And I'll talk about kind of general average impact and things like that. So to fund this budget, administration is proposing this mill rate bylaw. Now, there's just a bunch of numbers in here, and let me explain. I have a little bit of a worksheet that helps explain it. In fact, did I give you the, oh, I did, councillor, I gave you this worksheet, it's got the grid. Let me walk you through it, it's a little bit tricky. But if you go down to the bottom two rows, 2024 and 2025, it essentially shows how much we're seeking to raise in total assessment or in total tax. And then it gets into residential municipal and school and non-residential municipal and school. So what I wanted to just point out is what we're proposing to fund this budget is the mill rate for residential in 2024 was 7.1 mills. We're proposing that that be reduced to 6.76 mills. That's about a 5% reduction in the mill rate. On the non-residential, 2024 was 11.8 mills. We're proposing a reduction of 11 to 11.28 mills, which is about 4.6% reduction in the rate. You will see unfortunately that you have almost a 10% increase in school tax on both of those. But again, I think everyone's on the same page that we're flowing that through and we're not trying to mitigate that.
That's the province, not us.
Correct, yes, call your local MLA, that's the office's response. So that takes total mill rates when you factor in the school, and this is the gray column, two-thirds of the way to your right. 2024 residential mill rate was 9.7905, we are proposing 7.5217. Non-residential at 15.385, we are proposing 14.9915, which is a decrease of mill rate of 2.75 and 2.56% respectively, inclusive of the school tax.
Good.
So just to give some idea of where we're trying to, basically what we're saying is the assessment increase that the residents incurred is going to be offset by the mill rate coming down. And so just to give some idea on the far right, the average resident, now this is on the average, including the school tax, the average resident would see a $26 a year increase in their taxes, so $2 a month is what the increase would be. Non-residential would be about $18 a month.
Remarkable.
I don't do my taxes, and I'm not a lawyer, but if we have such a steep increase in assessment, how are we, how are we able to drop our mill rate?
Because your increase in assessment-
Like a seesaw.
Yeah, yeah, it's always-
So we went up in certain categories, seven and a half, almost 8% increase in assessment. So if you kept the mill rate flat, you would be incurring a seven and a half to 8% tax increase. So we've pulled the mill rate down to mitigate so that you're not experiencing a seven and a half to 8%. You're experiencing 1.56.
And we were able to do that with a balanced budget-
Correct, based on this budget.
New tax revenue.
Correct.
So that, maybe, maybe Jeff, you can maybe explain a little bit. That possibility is because we had new assessment in our town. Can you explain a little bit the reason why we're able to do that?
And I apologize, I did not bring my assessment worksheet, but we had, anyway, it was a few million dollars of new assessment from 2024, 2025. A good percentage of that was new assessment. So it wasn't just increasing what existed, it was introducing new rate payers into the pool.
That's why, so it's new revenues that helped us to lower the mill rate.
So black card shopping is strong.
Well, you know, and you got, you're exactly right, that's six-plex, and then there'll be a couple more of those at the end of the year. You did have the solar, but that was abated, and so that one's a wash. We will start to, we'll start to have benefit from that next year, because we'll get 20% of that next year. So yeah, councillor, we go back and forth a lot about what is that right mix because we're also trying not to compensate for the school tax. So we're trying not to pull it too far down because we have to see, are we still covering operations? Are we putting good amounts in reserves? You are reserving a million and a half dollars into reserves. And so, boy, now I'm worried about Councillor Jensen down there.
She just had her drink, it went the wrong hole.
I was just starting to put down something in the water.
Yeah, boy, that bottle of water, no problem.
So we have no more candy.
So that's how-
Like I'm in the right place tonight.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
So in, in short, councillor court, that's how we balance that, is new assessment helps a lot. And then we were able to, from the time we did the December 25th budget, we were able to remove things like the interest on the sewer plant financing. So there was 125 grand, for example, that we were able to pull out. Just things like that really helped hold that.
Councillor?
So on, do we know on that black card development if they plan on continuing developing the rest of it? Like, they're not pausing to do sales or whatever that's?
So I happened to talk to Mr. Oliver last week, I was visiting with him about it, and he said they plan to start pouring the footings on the third one any time here. So that's going to start right away.
There have some people who are moving from Calgary in our community in that development, which is interesting.
And then we should have in 2025, I think we've already been issuing permits for, well, no, 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 the permits aren't issued, but I think there's two or three for the Fairway Boulevard development already planned for the one we were just talking about on top of the golf course. I think there's two or three homes already planned for that, just waiting for, they don't have their elevation plans yet. don't have their elevation plans yet there, so they're just, you'll see, they got machinery up there now, trying to get elevation sorted. The Atkins, the golf course one, there's one under development with the two more planning for permit. So I'm anticipating we have a good assessment year again in 2025.
The United Church is still.
Right.
On track to start theirs this year.
Yeah, excellent. So some, some good things there.
When you start, it's a good thing for tax.
You're exempt though, right? That development would be exempt.
Actually, I don't think it is. I think they plan on it being taxable, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the intent is it's owned by a corporation.
Yeah.
That's taxable.
Right.
Arms length from the church.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
All good.
So, Counsel, I'm happy to talk a long time about this if you wish. If you don't wish, what we're looking for tonight is bylaw 1721 to have two readings, an allowance for third reading and third reading.
Today.
Tonight if we would.
Yes, we want to do that today.
I'd be willing to start that off.
Honestly, let's, let's give kudos to administration for bringing us that mill rate. Jill Hugh is not there, but please pass on our thanks for that great work.
She's had a bit of a baptism by fire, but she's doing great.
But for our first budget, it's rather impressive.
I would like to say though, not only, I agree 100% about compliments to our administration who always does a good job at this time of the year with these things, in my experience, but also to you, Mayor Cronin, four terms ago, in terms of the pursuit of good governments and good fiscal management.
Oh, thank you.
Putting reserves away.
Yeah.
I mean, look at the impact, you know, of looking ahead in terms of your finances and putting your money, money away for a rainy day or whatever you want to call it, and to the previous councils for making that happen as well, you know.
Yeah.
Around Counselor Court, as a first time, first term counselor, it's almost easy because of the work that, that you and the previous councils have done to, to set all of this in motion tonight.
Yeah.
I'd tip my hat off to you, Mayor Cronin.
Thank you. And there was a lot also with the utilities. I mean, if Counselor Court remember, the first council I was on, we started discussing importance of putting the utilities as a business, and I mean, separate them from the regular, the regular budget and start to give them their own life and tell them got to start to become sustainable sooner or later.
I mean, people out there grumble about taxes. Nobody likes to pay taxes, but I think it's, it's one of those things that when you live in a democracy, you've got to do, and I don't, I don't.
Well, they just need to compare.
But if anybody approaches me and gripes about a, a 2% or less tax increase on an annual basis, I say, you don't know what you're talking about. You need to look at your neighbors all around us who are in worse shape than we are.
Okay, you want to do?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept first reading of bylaw 1721 mill rate by law.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. I thought Counselor Kenley wanted to do. You want to do a motion, the second, Counselor Kenley?
Uh, yeah, yeah, sure, that's fine.
I had seen your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, I will make a motion for second reading of bylaw 1721 mill rate by law.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Counselor Court, do you want to do allow for third reading?
I will make that motion to allow for third reading of bylaw 1721.
Mill rate by law. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. The last one. Counselor Granger?
I will move that we approve for third and final reading, bylaw 1721 mill rate by law.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Jill can now start to prepare our taxes.
We're printing, so we'll, yeah, get tax notices out right away.
Thank you very much, Counselors. That was really six months in the making, but my goodness, it's amazing that we have that ready. All right. I think we have finished the public portion of this meeting. We are moving pretty good, Counselors, but we need to go in a closed session for three item of business matter, local improvement tax and utility billing matter.
Oh, if I may, Mayor, just for the public, we do not need to discuss 10C anymore. I've dealt with it administratively.
Okay, so this one, yeah, you were telling me that you might.
It's all handled.
All handled, okay, so two item of business. All right.
I would move that we move into closed session.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
... Mower, our used mower, to the town of McGrath for the sum of $25,000.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, councilors.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Six fifty.
That's amazing. Thank you so much, Councilor Kennedy, for being there.